They're gonna be. Those companies. I'm saying. Oh, first name. I, not to my knowledge, they, they canceled. Canceled the spiritual channel. They got directions on grants. I said, well, we can. Well, such as. I didn't hear any of them. Obviously, we were talking yesterday. And I said, oh, you know, like. That's your career. I want to come here. I don't know. I get more things to run the station real quick. Everybody still on where you're going, Grant?
No.
Like you think. Anyone want to speak with me in the shadows? Anybody? Okay. But that's what we're. I've got an office that's a living room. It's ten. When I get the full commission court here, which we do today, we got five people. I've got to have her in here. I've got to have Scott in here. I've got to have him in here, which makes eight. Which lately, we want to see.
On the side, for my part, do you have any questions?
If, if you're setting up here on agenda item, just being good at risk, I will figure hallway or return up. If you're going over here, pull it up where you're watching, we should call this down below library.
I can step out if I have the bills.
Or. Okay. Is that how I need to do this? I think it's already. Okay. Thank y'all. Would you go one over? I'll step out. Yeah, I'm going over. You get a judge. I can open the door here also. Okay. Oh, you're okay. We got a haircut. All right, sit here. Where did I try you? Do you know where it's at? Where, where? Yes, sir. Okay. If you're saying what I've worked in prayer, then I understand. Our dear and beloved God, we just want to give you a call. And we thank you for all the blessings that you have given each and every one of us. God, we thank you for continuing to bless things that count in the state of Texas and this nation. God, we ask that your spirit and your love would abide in each one of us, God. God, while we may have different opinions, God, we, we should focus on your spirit and your love towards each other. God, I pray that you just be with this meeting. As we enter this meeting, we invite you to be with us. God, we ask for your judgment, your wisdom, your guidance, all the decisions we make for this county. God, we ask that you just be with us. God, we ask that you just continue to protect us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I order the regular session of Metro County Commissioners Court Wednesday, August fifth, twenty twenty, at six a.m. Court is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes for the meeting of Metro County Commissioners Court approval signed for July the twenty second, twenty twenty. So, what's the question? Say, motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions, discussion, corrections? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment of estimate.
What was that?
Got motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying county bills estimate. Got motion by Commissioner West, second. Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general businesses, any general business we need to be made aware of? Being none, we'll move to item number six, public comments, Scott, anybody sign up? I didn't. I don't think you're going to do it. Show me the. No, sir. Okay. We'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider annual financial report for Metro County Emergency Service District. Number one, you have a report before you. The state sent a letter out with all the ESDs saying that you just folks got this thing to us. And then, and then to. Play the name, Van Zandt County. I'm going to go some way. That accepted financial report. Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider delay of the courthouse generator storm shelter rebate program due to the current COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, Vicki came to me. Well, they sent an email out on July the ninth and board. I sent it on July the tenth. On July the tenth, they give us list of everything that they ordered to get that grant. And I think they all got copies of that. I sent copies to everyone for all requirements required. And, and Vicki said, and Vicki's point was she didn't, she did not have time to deal with all the COVID nineteen tracing and tracking of all the ones, you know, she, if you know, but she. Anytime we have a positive case, she does contact tracing. Uh, could be being contacted with a list, and it is ridiculous. Now, March, March and April, you weren't having that man. When you start having thirteen, fourteen, it becomes an access. So she, Vicki shared with me, I don't have time to do this. And I said, okay, she's going to be able to, uh, to, to wait and apply for it later. And I said, sure, we're, I mean, no problem. Uh, speaking with Commissioner West, I thought he, he was disappointed that we had been put off. Uh, and it should, it should be a court's decision, not my decision. And so, I will get to the agenda. Vicki, do you have anything you want to add, or?
No, except I don't have time. And I'm only to contact tracing for Van Zandt County, but also to contact tracing for Raines and Anderson County. So, my days are twelve right now. And, and I simply just got back about them. Um, had we got, this was, this grant was submitted in March, and had the state got that back to us on a timely manner, I probably would have had time to go ahead and push through. But we didn't get this back until the middle of July. And we only had two weeks, or not even two weeks, about ten days to get all of these requirements met for both of these grants. Now, I will say there are some other funding opportunities out there. If, if, if we decide to go through with this one and somebody takes it, somebody will have to take it and finish it. Because I, again, I just don't have time. But it, it would have to be completed and turned into the state by Friday next week, which is the fourteenth. On the generator grant, there's like twenty requirements that have to be done. On the rebate program grant, there are eleven. And those would have to be turned in by Friday next week. There are a couple of other funding opportunities that are out there right now, um, that are not new until October the tenth. So, we wanted to just switch this one over to that one, and that is an option that we also have.
Would that be for the same grant?
That would be for both of the projects.
Okay. But, and, but we did, after speaking with Mr. West, I had Vicki contact him. They said he, that we could send the letter to date to him, saying, hang on.
If we wanted to sign with this four four one six, everything has to be done. The letter has to go in from the judge that we want to go get and go forward to the project. And everything would have to be completed and turned in by next Friday. The fourteenth. The fourteenth.
Just to get the extension?
No. It has to be completed.
Oh, for this to.
This is extension. Yes.
Well, so we were not available for another extension?
No. We would have to change your ass completely. So we'd go from DR four four one six, which is currently working on. If you wanted to go with October tenth, that one, we would switch that over from DR four four one six to DR four four six six. And all we have to do is just change the numbers on the applications and recent applications, along with all of these other requirements they're asking for.
And everyone had to be turned in in October?
In October, yes, on October second.
Are you going to have time to do that?
I doubt it. At this point, I mean, I just doubt it.
October. I don't see you playing slow down.
It has not looked far. But all the paperwork and stuff that I've already done, I can share with everybody. And part of the whole bit that we had with this one, after we got this letter in on the. The tenth, the hazard mitigation plan had not been filed at FEMA. It was approved, but they had not filed it yet. So we had to go back to the contractor. The contractor then had to go back to FEMA and say, we need this done now. And so they did get that done. That held us another four days. We couldn't even proceed forward with that four days. But it is there now, all that's second here on us. And there we are.
Well, it appears to me that if we do this, even, even if Vicki doesn't have the time, Vicki's going to have to assist. But I've had eleven things on the table that are, you don't understand. I think most places they can't have a fill in.
You know, it's going to learn from this for sure. So, and there are people at the state level that lost some of that.
Well, it's massive.
It is massive.
It, it's, it's massive.
And, and it, it seems to get more so with each project that you do, is to get more and more requirements.
I, I don't even. I think we have to talk him in, like, October and get this other one, because I don't, I don't see a way you can, or even us can get it done.
It, it would, it would be a challenge.
Sure.
There's no sure thing we're going to get one done in October?
No, but at least we'll have a few more days. You need to read those eleven things. That's just eleven of these. So, I can't say that you can do it. Don't have anything to do with the general, there's twenty on the general.
And keep in mind too, that even if you get all these things done and you submit this all in a perfect form to the state, that doesn't mean that it'll prove it. Meaning there's definitely a lot of that money, just like we are, so. There's no guarantees.
And it's federal or state?
It's federal. It's under the hazard mitigation plan.
But if they turn it to the board, you know the requirements. You have to, you know all about that for that stuff. Yeah. Yeah. Sorry, boys. Doing crazy shit. I'm doing thirty, looking at everyone's skirt. I'm doing, working on, working on. Check that. For structure. I have to front them all. And because we're getting rid of this COVID. Yes.
COVID.
That's what I'm buying. I'm going to hear your word again. That's the one I want to come over and tell them. Because I'm going to do this. Yeah, I think they need to, they need to put it off. But I don't see a way we can do this in the next week and a half. I mean, I'm not, I'm not kidding, y'all need to raise a foot. Yeah, yeah. So, the idea is that's when I made a judgment. And Vicki talked to me, and I looked at it, and I thought, there's no way, no way with you. And so she said, is it all right if, if I send it and say, you know what, we're not, we're not going to do this? And I said, yeah, that's fine. I thought, well, you know what, maybe. So, I entertain where you guys. But I, I think if you did it right, I don't see anything changing. Well, but we have a little more time to figure out what those eleven things are and the twenty things are, because. It's crazy. I made the motion, maybe we can go ahead and, uh, apply for that. But I, I don't see with. Okay, so your, your motion is to go ahead and hold. And do not, and do not apply for the DR forty four sixteen grant. And reapply for another one for October. Is that your motion, Tim? Yes, sir. Got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and consider, dumb spirit, for. Item number nine, discuss and consider transferring equipment from sheriff's office to road bridge. Send my board. Sorry, keep eyes on our, item number nine, transferring equipment from sheriff's office to road bridge.
You will be started, or?
You might. Oh, I'm, yes, yes, I will do it.
Okay. Uh, of course, y'all know, we've been in the ten thirty three program. Well, actually, I guess Sheriff's almost been in it. Uh, I remember it when I came here in twenty thirteen. Basically, what it is, military, uh, they provide equipment to fund, to help protect against terrorism, narcotics, you name it. Uh, some of this equipment is restricted to where it belongs to the government from now on. It just belongs to the county on a temporary or permanent basis. Well, not permanent, but a temporary basis. You, you can keep as long as you want it. But if you don't want it anymore, it has to go back to the military. Uh, the equipment we're here talking about today, uh, this is kind of like what we did several, maybe years ago. Uh, we had four pieces of equipment that we donated, I guess, to the county. It was off the books. Uh, I think precinct one and two, got some of it, the roller, uh, radar, and two truck rakers. Basically, we're here for the same thing today. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Precinct Three, he's got six pieces of equipment that he's been using or has loaned from us. And as far as I'm concerned, if we put something in the minutes, that, that equipment can go to him. I mean, it, it's, it's basically county equipment when it comes off the books. I just need something in my records, uh, when I go back to the military, to basically what we did with it. None of this property here is controlled property. Uh, so therefore, after we maintain it a year or two years, then it comes off the books and it becomes county property. Uh, one piece of the equipment is a haul truck, which is the older AMC General. I think it's a seventy something model, uh, heavy haul truck. We got this, basically, we picked it up from River River Armory. It was totally gone through and redone. Uh, it's set out there, it developed some issues, but Commissioner Pearson actually got it and got it back running. Uh, the other one is, he's basically had to have a, uh, heavy haul truck to move some of his equipment. So we loaned him a two thousand nine freightliner. It was basically brand new when we got it. He's requesting that piece of equipment. Uh, the other one is a nineteen ninety eight low bed, uh, tilt trailer that we loaned, I just did. Uh, he gave me in the woods when we had the sheriff's office. I put a new floor in it. Uh, and we did a little trading or whatever. And I gave the trailer to them. They went to put new brakes, everything on at their expense. So I request that that be transferred. Uh, the other is a nineteen seventy five low king heavy haul trailer. That's a triple axle forty five foot, uh, semi trailer. That was in poor condition when we got it. He also spent the money to have somebody go back through and totally redo the brakes, the bed, uh, everything on it. Uh, the other one is a nineteen ninety four blue Chevrolet, uh, truck that we got from the army, uh, utility bed on it. He's been using that along with the two thousand and two little minibus, the, uh, E four fifty. That's what they use to carry the trusses around and pick up trash and do service out of community. So, basically, that's six pieces of equipment. Just need some type of minutes if y'all agree to where it actually goes over the hill. And I can put it in my books, and military ever has any questions, ask where I'm at. And since we've got the sheriff elect here, we've got other equipment. Uh, I mean, we can decide if, because actually at one point, C of Canton, we got that D seven dozer that they were actually interested in with the other haul truck and trailer. Uh, and that would be another question, uh, for y'all, if y'all wanted to donate it to them. If the sheriff has, sheriff elect has no use for it, uh, that they're interested in. All this equipment, the only money that it cost us to get this equipment is the fuel and time to go pick it up and then to maintain it. Other than that, uh, the D seven dozer, I think he's had about nine hundred hours before we got it. Uh, we used it to, uh, bulldoze Marv Law Fields. Uh, I used it to knock the Mount Carmel fire, to go in there, they couldn't control the fire. So I went up there with the dozer and pushed the structures down with it. And we've also used it multiple times on timber fires. But currently, uh, we have seventy nine items from the military.
Seventy nine?
Uh, well, seventy nine items. Now, there's a couple of items, like the hand point scopes that we use on our office. That's considered one item, but there's twenty five different scopes. And, and my deal is I'm the one that's got the military clearance. I'm the one that goes through the military. Uh, so, as y'all know, I'm probably leaving, uh, shortly. I'm just going to, I gotta get, somebody take responsibility for it and get it out of my name.
Let, let me explain a little bit to the court. The bus, y'all remember when I came on this commissioner, I started with the help of Dale, started the inmate program. My, our goal was on bus, but the bus didn't run. And I was hoping to have a bunch of inmates. But as it turns out, it's not, we don't always have the inmates classified to be released. So, the most that we've ever had at one time is three. So I haven't had to use the bus. Got a transmission problem right now. But, uh, but it's still over in precinct three. They gave this, the, the, the general, or they're coming to take the general, and I didn't get it running. But it's, it's old, it's rebuilt, but it's old and seems like it's always one of the problem after another. So in the meantime, they're trying to take the freightliner, which is old nine. That's what I use on a weekly basis, getting other haul trucks. We use it to move our, our truck up, out, places before we have to clean colors. So I have that, the, the, the smaller trucks, I didn't sit very well. If anybody else does have it, it's not running. But that's the issue, this stuff has not been transferred to me in the last thirty days. It's been precinct three all along, it's still on the Van Zandt County. And they're just, like, damn, paying a lot of us, I got to use that, because I had no way to haul equipment when I came in. So that's what this is going on. Uh, the rest of the equipment, I don't know what. Dale and New Sheriff have what they want to do with it. They want to transfer that to all of us until we figure out what's going to go on to take care of that problem. This is pretty good for the court. But I, I wouldn't request this stuff, but I've been precinct three, been responsible for Madison for the last three years. I would present that.
And like the commissioner said, we get this equipment, it's free. It's kind of like rolling the dice. A lot of this stuff, you can go out there and just war slap that out. Uh, but then again, you can go with these places, uh, like this freightliner, uh, well, two of the freightliners. Two thousand nine freightliners, Detroit engines. Uh, one had three hundred miles on it. The other one had, I think, twelve hundred on it when we got it. It's probably a sixty five, seventy thousand dollar piece of equipment. That basically caused us the amount of fuel to drive. We picked one up in Colorado, picked one up in Houston. Uh, it's been a good program. Uh, I mean, I hope the county will continue it. We just signed a new M O U. Uh, my main concern is stuff is accounted for. So when I leave, I just want my, my name off of it.
On everybody, now, if, if anybody has any question, I've got a list of the equipment that's precinct three takes care of. Also, the insurance list, for use aid, all these vehicles listed under my insurance. So it's not, it's not anything sneaky going on here. Just trying to do a little after.
Here's, here's the deal on this. Uh, Chief, you've done a good job, Sheriff, you've done the next job, trying to get all this military equipment. You know, why? We've got Sheriff Left here, you know, bump over that hill and say, what happened to all this property? Why are we trying to do all this stuff around and down? Uh, I mean, that's, that's just my question. I don't.
Really, we're trying to move it around, too, only we're responsible for December third, first.
Right. And that's why I say that.
Now, the judge is also on that.
I don't have a follow up with moving now. I mean, they're trying to keep their house.
What are you moving?
Oh, you're not moving all of it.
No, 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 no. It's just the six pieces of equipment that he's been using for all this time. It, it's just like we did on the four other pieces of equipment. Basically, I've got the aisles in the office. Uh, all of it, basically, when it comes off the books, it becomes county property. Okay? That property I'm not so much worried about, because that would be for y'all, uh, to maintain. My main issue is the restricted property, the weapons, the armored vehicles and all that. My main attachment, I'm responsible. I'm the only one that's dealt with the government, got the clearances to do that. Uh, when I leave, somebody will sign for that, uh, when I leave.
And, and that's, that's normal. I mean, someone at the sheriff's. Yeah, someone, someone was.
I don't care who signs for it, as long as.
Right. I'm wearing the two. Yeah.
So, we give the sheriff's a layer.
Can I be listed everything that you got?
It won't make a lot of sense to you, because it's all military.
I might call you.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all worth it, you got a little transition.
And, and my deal is I probably will leave before January the first. And.
And that's my question, if you leave before January the first, it's still going to be with the sheriff. A lot of the, the stuff that's, what you say is still on the books.
Right.
Will still be with the sheriff department. Sheriff, are you just going to point someone else over that equipment?
That equipment, I mean, that stuff through the military. Who'd love that?
That's the issue, I don't think there's anybody else at the sheriff's office with a clearance. Judges, people up there?
No, I mean, he's only. And you're wrong, but I'm the only one that actually has the clearance to deal with the military down there. All I need is the restricted items. Is when I leave on my list and I just want somebody to sign for it, that it's there when I walk out the door. I do not, I, when it comes to that. There's been numerous lists, you sheriffs, that have gone to jail over that, and I don't plan on doing any type of report that.
There are problems that happen, you know, if you got this place for whiskey.
So, I mean, basically, if we can get it with the sheriff elect, uh, the other equipment that's off the books, that's county property. And these items, if y'all just do something for blocking, stick it in folders on like six pieces of equipment that is assigned to precinct three now, that's all I need. The rest of the stuff, uh, restricted stuff. Uh, like I said, when I get ready to leave here, I'm gonna make a list, we're gonna have somebody inspect, make sure it's there. And I don't care who, but somebody's gonna sign, sign for it.
Every piece of restricted, uh, equipment, do you have?
We've got.
One of those difficult, another twenty-five scopes down to one.
Right. Uh, the weapons that we've got, uh, you're looking at about twenty-five weapons, you've got the In route, which is a restricted item because it's up armored. The In route recovery vehicle, it's up armored, it's restricted. You've got two Humvees that are left out there that are restricted. Uh, the twenty-five eight points, uh, hard exit sites for the weapons that are restricted. You've got two, uh, thermal night visions that are restricted.
Well, let me ask you something, uh, Mike. Can, can we give it back to the government? Say, there it is. We no longer, you.
Restricted, uh, oh, you can.
The restricted, you can, or you can transfer it to another agency that wants it. Uh, I would hate to see Manzat County lose that In route. That's a million dollar piece of equipment that was brand new when we got it, donated by the military. Because we don't have the budget to purchase a, a Bearcat. In today's society, as y'all well know, the violence is, uh, greater and greater. Uh, I mean, we've proved that about a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I hate to see the county give up a piece of equipment like that because it's been used multiple times here. Uh, and basically when I talk to them, uh, because if the sheriff elect didn't want it, can't warn it. Military said, nope, uh, that it'll go to some city probably up north that's having problems with the protesting now. Uh, and that's going to be a decision. While this military equipment, when we received it, we also agreed that if we didn't want it, we return it. And that's what I'm trying to explain, uh, like that In route recovery unit, we picked it up at Red River Armory. But that don't mean if we want to turn it back, that it's going back to Red River Armory.
It'll go back to New York City.
It may go to New York City, it could go to Barstow, California. Uh, and either it's gonna be our responsibility to get it there, I mean, to pay to get it there or drive it there. Uh, the weapons that we got, uh, like I said, some of the weapons could probably go back, the others we've utilized, uh, they're an asset. Uh, for example, is the shooting. Uh, when you're involved in the shooting, the Rangers take your weapon until they clear it. Uh, the weapon I use was one of these military weapons. So I personally went out for one of my weapons, uh, for them to return it. Sometimes I can get it back to you within a few weeks, and sometimes it's months or years before they actually test out the code.
I want to vote today that you're just talking about the six items.
Yes, yes. I, I don't know, it's gonna be something that we're gonna have sent out and win. He wants, he don't want. And, and basically what it's gonna come down to, we get him hooked up to where he has access to it. Before whatever, I'm signing over to whoever, and, and I'm out, then it'll be his decision. Or if he wants now, we'll try to deal with it. To be honest with you, I don't want to deal with it. I don't want to have to drive it to the airport. At In route, it goes forty-five miles an hour. Uh, yeah. Uh, but right now, what I basically need is, is just to cover my butt. Is if y'all accept, uh, the six pieces of equipment being signed over to precinct three, I just need the minutes to put in the folders on that six pieces of equipment. For, from here to Michigan now, if there's a question, well, the military gave them a two thousand and nine freightliner. Where did he go? Well, those folders are gonna be there and say, oh, well, uh, August the fifth, commissioners for their business here, where they assign that property to precinct three. And this may be something else. I mean, all of y'all commissioners, there may be equipment that the sheriff is not going to utilize that y'all can utilize. Cause I've got another two thousand and nine haul truck and trailer.
So, Judge, I'm gonna motion right now, these six pieces of equipment can transfer the ownership to precinct three. And then come back with this before you leave. And we'll get representatives from state and somebody else, and we'll all go over this stuff. And we'll all sign off on it, that it's there, and bring it back to the court, that we all agree that that's there to relieve you of your responsibilities.
That is all. If I, it's there. Give me a.
We are gonna need a list. The, the, the equipment, do you have a list of the equipment that?
Yes, I can get you a list, I've got the military list.
No, I'm talking about the list that we're, we're dealing with today, going forward.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Uh, I can make you a list, he probably has it.
I've got the list with the serial numbers right there, those are marked.
Okay, okay.
Because of the military, it doesn't say two thousand and nine freightliner, it's got M eight sixty-one, M one, so.
And I get ready though, if you want to do that in that motion.
Why is that? And that's what you have to go record.
And, and put it in my motion as a two thousand and nine, uh, freightliner. Or simplistically, I'm gonna list the license plate number, which is, uh, zero nine four four eight nine seven. A nineteen ninety-four Chevrolet, three quarter ton pickup. Uh, the license number one two two nine zero eight three. A two thousand and two bus, license number one two six two four one five. Nineteen ninety-eight AM General, license number one three nine four five one five. A trailer, nineteen ninety-eight Pumbo line, license number nine one zero nine zero three four. And another trailer, nineteen seventy-five low king, license number nine one zero nine zero twenty-five. That's the six items.
Okay, we have the motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second, second by Commissioner Frank. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, uh, commissioner, could you read your motion again?
Yes, sir.
Well, here's, here's the deal. In here it says, discuss and consider transferring equipment from sheriff's office to Rook and Ridge. It's, it should say Rook and Ridge precinct three.
Yes, sir, I, uh, that, that was my motion, that these six items mentioned that is transferred to precinct, to Rook and Ridge precinct three, I'm still. Along, but I just, you want me to read a license one or you?
No. Sorry, motion second, any questions or discussion?
And I have a copy of that, of the, of the commissioner's one, of the one.
Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those who vote same, sign. Motion carried. And that, that vote in. Okay.
I just need a copy of the minutes when y'all get it done. Yes, you will.
It's usually about two weeks, about thirty minutes before we come back in.
That, that's fine. I'll just put the date of the commissioner's court, and whenever y'all get that, that'll be fine. So all I'm doing is speaking, I'll get this equipment to work ten years from now. I'll go with you before it's ready.
I'm really, um, I think every once in a while, yeah, when you're leaving office, you know what responsibility? You know, boy, everything's here, you have an inventory, everything's here, and I don't give up.
Like I said, I, my name is building this for the eight years, and, and I've maintained it. So I just feel like sure when I leave, it's in proper standing.
December third, first.
I can hear it too.
I can. Okay, item number ten, discuss and consider.
One thing on this stuff. If Steve, I didn't want this stuff, I think the commissioner did get together, come look at some of that equipment because there's stuff there that we'll be able to give everyone, every far doing a job, tackling. And it is county property, the stuff that's off the books. You know, I mean, we've got dump trucks, we got road racker, we got, you know, stuff like that. We've got the tractor, stuff like that, and maybe, you know, come back and do that again.
But there's some of that stuff, it's not ever gonna come off the books. Like, if it are restricted, uh, weapons. A restricted items, the weapons and stuff, yeah, that's all that.
And I've kind of gone through and I'm trying to leave notes, highlight stuff like red, restricted, cannot, you know, give away or, or whatever. And what the sheriff is saying, i- if y'all don't want, uh, some of this equipment like that, those are, uh, I would like to see it go, I like to see it stay in the county, uh, to benefit the citizens here, whether it's in the city of Canton. Uh, because they have a use for that dozer. If y'all don't want it, I would like to see it stay in the county, uh, because it's still benefiting citizens of this county.
Item number ten, discuss and consider dumpster for the sheriff's office to be painted out of the forfeit fund.
That's something, uh, drug asset, we're here, we're, we need to. I guess there's a dumpster. We have construction orders on some of that stuff, back to back, been there since nineteen ninety-two. And the destruction order, instead we wanted to fill that, so. Don't worry, you don't have to with it. And number three, that way we know where it's, you know, where the things in county property. I don't know, dumpsters, I think Keith's been, well, there's two of them. Please know, you know, the county, that stuff, I don't know what they're running, four, five hundred. Things like that.
No, no.
I don't know. One, maybe two. But the money didn't, drug asset, four period, not taxpayer money, you know, but. I have to give it to the commissioner before.
Yeah, one, one, yeah. I would, we're just.
That's all.
Yes, to come to the commissioner's court.
I'm, I'm, no, I mean, she's, or, whether it's on this destruction order, it's, uh, so. Oh, well, hold on, I, I mean, I'm.
Oh, that, well, that's my question.
Make sure, like, uh.
Um, when I, when I was with agenda, I mean, it's asking for a dumpster, but my understanding that it's a dumpster to clear out some evidence or, well, whatever. And I said, I didn't want to do it without Thomas' blessing.
So we started working on this, I think, back in March or April. Um, and we actually got, uh, the district judge to sign a destruction order, authorizing the destruction of all of that old evidence that's outside, that's been stored in those Conex boxes. Um, I went out there and physically went through one of them, the one that, um, couldn't be secured anymore because of weather damage. Um, it's old stuff, it's from the nineties, there is no reason, um, at this point to keep it. Um, and I will tell you that it would take, if, if we assigned two people to do nothing but inventory that, it would take over here. Uh, because it is just, it's, it's, it's weather damaged. You know, back in the nineties, nobody kept records like we have, what we have to do now. Um, it's all just stacked in there. And some of the boxes aren't, aren't intact anymore, so stuff has fallen out. Uh, it would be a horrendous job. I was comfortable that there was nothing in there that, in, in the boxes that would be relevant or necessary to anything anymore. The people that Sheriff Corbin assigned to go through it, they came to the same conclusion. Uh, we wrote some affidavits that I helped write, presented to the district judge, and the district judge was signed off on everything out there being destroyed. Uh, so the only practical way to do that is with some dumpsters. Uh, and rather than use county taxpayer money, sheriff thought of using the, uh, seizure forfeiture fund, his part of the seizure forfeiture fund. But of course, since he wasn't reelected, he has to have commissioner's court approval to, to spend those funds now. Uh, my recommendation would be that you authorize him to spend enough for up to three dumpsters. Uh, I think it'll take more than one, I don't know if it'll take more than two. Uh, but that would be my authorization. And I know, Mr. Pearson, you, uh, helped me get one in the past. Um, and like you said, it grew over four hundred dollars. Uh, so personally, I, I don't think it'll take more than three, it may only take two. So I would authorize you, uh, to spend however y'all want to do it, up to fifteen hundred dollars, up to the cost of three dumpsters, however y'all are comfortable with. But I do think that it needs to be done, I do think that it's the only way. Uh, if I were a new office holder coming in, it would be the only way. I would want to take office as if it were done now. And I am comfortable that we are not, we would not be hurting anything of an evidentiary nature for any cases in future.
You're, are you saying most of those patients are disposed?
Yes, yes, sir.
I have many questions about dumpsters, too, but it's, there, there's actually rear cans, tag. Empty rear can, you know, come up. No, no drug paraphernalia.
No, sir.
No, no drug paraphernalia, I know, you're anything I go with, but.
No, sir.
No type of weapons or anything like that.
Anything that we come across like that would be sorted out and individually destroyed.
Well, I know you brought some of that, and I, I presume we press it with our duty, of course.
We don't think that there's anything of that nature, but, I mean, this can't just be an operation where we I don't know what to call it, use a big thing and put it in. I mean, it's gonna have to physically be people going in there, picking up a box, putting it in the dumpster. And of course, if they came across a weapon, uh, then that would need to be separately itemized. Uh, I don't think there will be any drug paraphernalia out there. Uh, it should have gone to the lab, even back in the nineties, all of that stuff should have gone to the lab. Uh, and the container that I walked through didn't have any of that kind of stuff in it. Uh, it is possible, I guess, that they could find a weapon, shouldn't be one, uh, but it is possible. But anything like that, uh, would need to be taken separately, and we'll take it to the district judge and get a separate destruction order for that.
I still was, oh, sorry, I still was saying the point, is this is not something that just occurred overnight. Uh, when I came in there in twenty thirteen, we were trying to figure out what those Conex box were out there for. When we started opening them, and there was a couple of full of these old eight liners, they're called, you know, two or three of them full of eight liners. Uh, but literally, one of these, or two of these Conex box just has evidence, like somebody's taken a bucket and thrown it in there. Well, like the DA said, without taking multiple staff, we would spend, I don't know, we'll do the year. We'll do each individual item, trying to count for that. Matter of fact, when we came into office, uh, we contacted the Rangers to come over and inventory, you know. I had eight, ten Rangers, ten Rangers there, and I said, we're not touching that. We don't want nothing to do with it, we'll inventory the items that are in the main, uh, evidence and property right. So in my thirty years, well, I've never seen a mess this back there. And basically, if we don't do something, it's gonna keep passing now, passing now, because nobody wants to jump on the tire.
And, and this is something that we started working on many months ago.
We've got some internal issues also.
I have a question. What are you going to do with that dumpster once it's full? You just take a good dumpster? It doesn't dispose of it, or I can say.
Well, we processed before, I mean, for the amount of property we got there, if you actually carry this, have it disposed of, incinerated, it's five a pound. We could buy, now, this is what y'all want to do, but the sheriff's department, even asset forfeiture, don't have the money, because we consider buying a small incinerator, which actually needs to happen down the road. Now, but, I mean, the only true way is you incinerate it, and you're going to have to have a hell of an incinerator to incinerate that stuff.
And, and like Chief Bay said, some of it is eight-liner machines, some of it is jock, a broom, a fishing pole, an empty backpack, uh, just, just.
You have a rock in there with evidence tagged on it, because that rock was found because somebody's, uh, witnessed it, so they tagged it as evidence. You got this chain that's tagged, because it was cut off and compared.
Like I said, it's tagged back in nineteen ninety-two. The only thing we have to worry about is if we run across something, you know, that would have to be, even if it's back in nineteen ninety-two.
That's why, other than that, we still got to go through it by hand. But like the eight-liners, uh, what we've done with those in the past is they sit out there, they're not built that good anyway, so they brought it to the parking board, the one road. We pull them out, line them up, I take the toes and run over them, and basically, where there's nothing left to, I mean, be used to it in the excavator over the dumpster.
Is there any confidential information, like names, address, social security numbers?
Well, all these tags are going to have probably a name and a case number on them.
Right, there's, there's no files, per se, it's, it's, like, if there's a box of items that belong to one case, it may have the defendant's name or the victim's name, or the tag on the, on the rock, or the tag on the fishing pole, uh, you know, maybe have somebody's name on it. But it's not like there is case reports with dates of birth, social security number, that kind of stuff in there.
The worst thing is to take it off.
I'm sorry?
The worst thing is to take the tag off.
But yeah, we could just pull the tags off as we throw it in, yeah.
There, I bet you, though, there will be somebody running through that to see what's, what's on there.
We got you, Don.
They better not, no, when we get after the help.
That's exactly right. I mean. And then pretty much going to brush her time, yeah, it's worth it, I brush.
The eight-liner machines, because they're illegal to possess.
It's official, right?
Yeah.
I mean, the only way to do that is we find some burner, we pile it up, burn it, strip the remains of it, and haul them off. Or, I mean, we could bury it somewhere, we got the equipment to burn it and bury it.
See, see, you.
Oh, it's open, no, it can't burn, we've got so many.
Yeah, I mean.
Then when it's burned, brush it, we can, I mean, come on, taking all that burned dumpster photograph?
You know, and if, if somebody does, if we take the dumpsters to the dump and somebody does go through it, I mean, that's a risk with any crash that goes to the dump, I guess, but.
For the dumpsters, they hold, hold.
Yeah, they go to the landfill.
Right, yeah, they might.
We're going to be destroyed.
So the commission, the, the item is just to give permission to.
Right, because the sheriff wasn't reelected, he can't spend forfeiture funds without commissioner's court approval. Um, so, yeah, that's all, that's all that, uh, we're asking for.
And everything that's being destroyed, there's, uh, district judge has signed off destruction.
Yes, sir.
They're not destroying anything, it hasn't been signed off.
And we'll simply, you know, follow protocol, we'll have a camera out there, I mean, it's going to take a while, but video forward to it. It's a whole lot easier on y'all not to do it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's going to be done.
Y'all won't have to do it every time we. Every time we. Yeah, I don't know, you like. There. Is it in like two weeks, one, three?
No, this is something, they find the weapon, what we find evidence down there.
Yeah.
What they want me about there?
I tried that off.
Yeah, she got that off. I said, I'm trying to retire, okay?
Okay. There. Okay, then, what, what are asking for a provision, you heard Tom does deal with, you know, it's going to take at least. Or if you want to put a dollar amount, you know, that, what, four hundred dollars, if you said fifteen hundred dollars. Fifteen, get over three, you know, fifteen.
That'd be good.
Is there a motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion to be approved for fifteen hundred dollars, the sheriff's got his forfeiture fund, start claiming out the, uh, old past evidence.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any other questions or discussion? Being done, all that clear, say aye, those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider sheriff's office K nine program. Bridger, did you want to do?
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing, and then you can talk to him.
Okay.
Uh, the dog yourself, cross franked dog, he's had three hammers, he's had a dog. So, my, my idea on this thing, because the dog, it will match, I promise you. Kevin's about the only one that can handle it. My idea on this, do I do this again? It's probably to retire that dog. And if he decides he wants the dog, your money, drug asset, point of interest, there for a dog, we've got that account, P, there's a lot of money in that account. And if he wishes to do that, then he can purchase his dog.
Let me give you a little background, Rico. Um, when we started this program, I contacted, uh, the training facility, and I kind of told them what I was looking for, since I used to do K nine handling. And given you come up here, but I kind of told them what I worried about, the dog, uh, the owner of the kennel said, I've got a couple of dogs, but I've got one dog that Austin PD's turned back to. Just, just anybody that's can handle this dog. Of course, I like to challenge that people, so we get in a conversation, and the owner knows he's burnt. Didn't even know he was working for us, and the conversation come up, he said, well, this dog will make this dog work. Well, within a few days, me and he top, hopped in the truck we rode down there, we looked at some dogs, and when we come to Rico, we got Rico out, and let me tell you, the fight was on. It was a dust storm down there between he and Rico. And before it was over with that dog, it was standing beside he, paying attention to what he was telling him to do. All the other trainers come out, and he watched that. Uh, of course, he's left us, uh, and he worked with Kevin, and Kevin has gone above and beyond with that dog. He's taken his own time, own money, gone to the air force base, and trained with Rico. I just don't think at this point that anybody else will be able to take Rico and be efficient. Because I'm telling you, even.
And you can say for that.
Yeah, I mean, even as far as they, they got, and Kevin, he works his butt off for that dog. That's, the dog will still eat you up, believe me, I got bit by it, I got this way, he bit me, uh, he's been a couple of other officers.
Was it the dog's fault?
No, it, it, all this time, it was my fault, and it was the other officer's fault. But I'll tell you, that's one of the most aggressive, uh, and bullheaded male wolves I've ever seen in my life.
And, and that's what you're saying, I mean, it's not the dog's fault. I, I don't see the dog, well, we can't handle it, we don't put it back, you know, I was going for that.
Yeah.
I'm just, uh, I'm just saying it, you know, you guys spent a lot of time on the dog. And Kevin, nothing, you know, way we talked about that.
So, so what do you ask, what do you ask me to do?
Well, I, like I said, I've talked to Tom, but it passed a law that I can actually retire the dog. Or could, I mean, the county could probably not go on a sale the dog or whatever, or give the dog to another agency, we've got, then you're going to come back later on. Dog gets on the wagon, well, we've got to invest that cash. You know, so my suggestion is retire the dog. There's money in there, if Steve wants a program, go buy your dog, build the same place they got. But this particular one, like I said, you know, I, I don't feel, put the dog back out there again for the fourth time.
And my, my position is, whatever we do with the dog, I won't ban that county release for, I don't want to ban that county responsible. Yeah, if, if, Officer Bridger, if you re, if you retired the dog, if the county retired the dog, and you acquired, uh, employment elsewhere, would the dog be able to work with the, else, sir, not, not about.
I was just researching this too. But, uh, the dog can't go somewhere else.
She's retired.
So, what, if I may, uh, I'm Kevin Bridger, by the way, um, once the dog retires, it cannot work for another agency. That's just one point, can't have it. Uh, once it retires, I assume all responsibility financially, legally, insurance-wise, um, you know, if he gets on somebody, I assume full responsibility and release the county of any liability whatsoever. He lives out his life with me, um, you know, a- as we do now, if he will, we're together, everything, uh, he lives with me. He's my dog. Basically, kind of the same thing as still treating dogs, uh.
So is there, is there another, is there another way that the county can release him and not have responsibility, when he could go with you and work?
I would, I would love that, that would be great, and that would be fine, too. You know, that's not my, that, I'm not here for that, for that goal, but I would love that, that would be fine. But I'm here just to keep my partner.
Right, really, I, I agree.
So, um, the SPCA did some research, and I, and I apologize, I didn't know that we're having this morning, but, uh, the SPCA did some research, and anything past three handlers, um, a dog of that nature can get PTSD, and it becomes a huge issue for someone that, that don't know how to operate dogs, uh, if you will. He's very hot-tempered, he's very, I'm sure y'all are hard to afford, and he, he's, he's a very hot-tempered dog, so, um, you know. I would just say that I want my dog, and that's it, you know, how the commissioner's court, to your, to what you just said, Joe, I mean, that would be fine, too, because, you know, he, he still is an accident.
That's what, there, there's still a lot, a lot of cliff.
I, I was. So four years old, and the average life, uh, that year, so, you know, so he has about, he's four, and the way he works and the way, you know, I, I work on time, Chief Bay said that, you know, um, I go to, uh, the air force base, I train with their dog, their dog masters all the time, a pound master, brother, and, um, they have asked me to come back, actually, a few different times, to show their handlers how their dogs should, should act in certain situations. So, um, you know.
Well, let, let me ask y'all this, if, if y'all would consider that, Tom, what, what is the deal if we didn't retire him, the county donated?
I don't think you can donate it under the law, but if.
I'll buy it.
But if, if, if Kevin were to get hired somewhere else, I believe the county could sell the dog to that agency for a dollar, ten dollars, or, or whatever. But if they did so, they would want a written release of liability. Now, as a lawyer, I will tell you that no release of liability is a hundred percent, but at least it would help. Um, uh. See, it used to be, it used to be that dogs, because dogs were, were county or city property, when they were done, the county or the city had to just keep them and ha, and wind up having a dog pounder, or had to put him down. So recently, there was a law passed that said if a dog is retired, he can be given by the county to the handler and taken home and live out his life as a pet, um, in the house. Um, but there, if he is retired, and Sergeant Bridger goes to work somewhere else, he can never work that dog for that agency. Now, personally, he can still take the dog to the air force and do demos and, and use the dog to teach on a personal level or whatever. But it can never be a drug detection or a, a human apprehension dog for another agency.
If, if you retired that dog, would you draw up the paperwork releasing him, so sign up on it, raise the badge, that county involved?
I would be happy to, I'll tell you, um, I'll probably go ahead and consult with Robert Lee to do that, just because that's more their expertise than mine. But I would be happy to do the vast majority of the work to save the county money on that. Um, you know, a- and another thing is, we could actually, um, we gotta get a notice or anything, yeah, we're. We could actually, or you guys could actually table it for a couple of weeks, look at the option of, of selling it, um, if.
I'll, I'll buy.
Well, I think we could, I think they could only sell it to another agency, now, here's. Oh, yeah, I forgot, he was bought, that's it.
Yeah.
He was bought, that's unfortunate, I think the only option is retiring.
Yeah, and we wouldn't want to sell the dog, I mean, just, I think we'd want to retire this retired dog, but we wouldn't want a release.
Sure, sure, and I can, I can, yes, I will do the vast majority of the work on that, I just want Robert Lee to look over it, because that's more their expertise area than mine.
He can't work that anymore here, is he?
No.
He's reaching.
He's four now, and, uh, I expect he has about two and a half more good years, to be real honest, two and a half, maybe three. But we work, uh, I work a lot, so, I mean, I mean, he's always running, jumping, and so it's, you know, I'm not trying to wish it, I'm not trying to let y'all down, just trying to, we, we work a lot, so.
For, for a little bit of clarity, people, this can be watching, and the people here might not know, Kevin is not planning to stay with the new construction. That's why this, all this has come up.
I have already invited two of them.
So, that's, that's, that's the issue of why this is coming up now.
And, and i- if you elect to retire him, I don't think the effective date has to be today. I think the effective date can be whatever Sergeant Bridger's last day of work is.
Do you have a?
Uh, there is one comment, I think, I see, I think I see the direction is to go. And, uh, I'm going to commend y'all, uh, because I can say the partial experience being out with Kevin and Rico. Uh, Rico is absolutely, uh, saving Benetac County first responders from, you know, serious medical injury, uh, on several occasions. Uh, so, that being said, I think it's very, uh, I think it's crucial that the commissioner's court can be, what's the message for Rico? Uh, Rico's not just a dog, most Rico's part, Rico's part of the family. Uh, so like I said, I think I see, this is the one, I commend the commissioner's court on, uh, y'all being open-minded on this, I just want to back up.
If you've never done K nine handling, you don't always find these parts.
But it sounds like the only option is to retire him, and I hate to retire him, because I, I would just send this Bridger, thank you, but he, use him another two years. I want you to have, if, if, but if not, can we have, we, we retire him?
Can we check with Robert Lee and see if there's any.
I want to talk to him on this. I haven't, I haven't got a final say on it.
Judge, I'm not emotionally tied with this, it's a lot.
Judge, I'm making a motion, we're tied with this, as long, as long as Kevin is an employer of Banzak County, and he's taking care of his dog, we're tied with it, to do some more investigation, to find the checking record, and, and we'll come back at a later date and make a decision of whether it's okay for him to go with Kevin to another agency, or we retire the dog and to Kevin's responsibility.
Okay, I'll session it. That's a motion, you have a second, table item number 11. Any other questions, discussion? Being done, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, all, motion carried. Item number 12, discuss and consider award, be a proposal for Banzak County 363 shop building?
Yes, sir, Judge. Been discussed, I've been discussing the court for, over a year, on replacing shop building there, 363, we went out for a public bid, advertising, Michael, everything that we should, we got, we got two bidders on that, and I'm making a motion that we award the bid to the lowest bid, the proper steel of terror, and that the court oversees the construction of this building, and that the court appoints me as agent to the court, report back to y'all on, on the construction of it.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second?
Second.
To award the building of the building, 363 building, there to be armed.
Proper steel.
The proper steel, and to appoint Keith, the overseen, and report back to the Commissioner's Court.
The court, the court is responsible for, and that's the court, to appoint me as the agent to the court, oversee, and report back to y'all with all the details, and, and no, no bill, there was no bills ever, I mean, I'll bring everything to y'all for approval as we look for the process.
Judge, have a motion, a second, second by Commissioner Brown. Any other discussion or questions? Being done, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number 13, discuss and consider approval of the Banzak County annual road reports, road report before you.
Make a motion, approve.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Mountain, second by Commissioner Pearson, questions, discussion?
We built all these reports, that's why, we have to do that every year, but we have to run it through the court, for, for those testing and, and attempting, so, we know what it is.
Got a motion, second, any other questions, discussion? Being done, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number 14, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year 20 budget amendments, budget amendments before you. Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Pearson, questions, discussion? Being done, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number 15, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by Mayor's Office and Department of County Government, approval of entry at same minute, as matter of record. Pretty early for monthly reports, first question, you have a comment?
Yeah, it is real early, we've only got four of them in, or eighteen, but certainly they'll come in.
Okay, is there a motion, approval of monthly report? I make, I make a motion by Commissioner Webb, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number 16, is there a motion to adjourn?
Judge, before that, I would like to make a comment, that this, transparency, that I didn't lock, state, back in, item number 12, that bid was for $104,527. Everyone listening, who's out working for?
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Mountain, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, we are adjourned.
I'm going to drop.
You too, sir.
Right. Okay, right? See you, Ian.